Good morning and welcome to the June 7th meeting of the zoning board of adjustments and appeals. First order of business is roll call. Ms. Mayweather.
Here.
Ms. Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Raschke.
Here.
Mr. Culberson.
Here.
And Ms. Farrell.
Here.
And Ms. Conishi is here. I will now turn it over. We have, I'm sorry, we have meeting minutes from a May meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. Mayweather.
Approved.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Raschke.
Yes.
Mr. Culberson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
And Ms. Conishi, yes. Now turn it over to the city attorney.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the zoning board of adjustments and appeals. This is a board comprised of members of the community that are appointed by our city commission. They are not city staff and they are charged sitting on the board in determining whether to grant variances from our city's land development code where literal enforcement of the code would create an undue or unnecessary burden or hardship and where granting such a various variance wouldn't be contrary to public interest. The way the procedures will work this morning, each applicant will be called forward. If you could come to the, to the mic and if you prefer to sit, you can sit here or to the podium, but just, we would ask that you speak into the mics that we can hear. It's a little bit difficult to hear up here. And then the board members will be able to ask any questions. Once you come up, if you could state your name for the record and also give a brief description of what you're requesting. Staff, city staff will also be able to present any additional information. If there are any members from the audience that would like to speak for or against a particular variance, they'll be given an opportunity to do so as well. I would ask if you are planning on speaking before the board today, I will need to go ahead and swear you in. So if you could stand at this time and raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing? Thank you. Turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you. Our next item up is we have new business, the appointment of the board officers. The current officers are Eden Conishi, the chair, and Kent Culberson is the vice chair. Do we have any nominations?
Any motions? Any motions?
Volunteers.
If you need some time to think about that, maybe we could move that to the end of the meeting after we take care of business or not.
No, I'm, I'd happily volunteer to continue being chair.
Nominate Ms. Conishi to continue as chair.
Thank you. Second. All right. Ms. Mayweather.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Raschke.
Yes.
And Mr. Culberson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell, yes. And Ms. Conishi, yes. I nominate Kent Culberson to continue as vice chair.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. Mayweather.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Raschke.
Yes.
Mr. Culberson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell, yes. And Ms. Conishi, yes. So, next up, we have our first item, which is... This is a request for a one-foot variance to allow a seven-foot high masonry wall in lieu of the maximum height of six feet for residential fences and walls specified by figure 4.4-1 of the land development code in order to increase the height of an existing wall approximately 200 feet in total length located along the south or the rear and east interior side property boundaries on the property located at 838 Lake Hollingsworth Road. And who is here to speak on behalf of this? Can you state your name and address?
Mark Culbert, 838 Lake Hollingsworth Drive.
Can you tell us a little bit about your application?
Uh, yes. Oh, there's an image there. That's helpful. Thank you. I like the description said, we have an existing wall and I proposing to, the way it's built, it's got a cap on it. I propose to take the cap off and raise the wall to get up to the seven-foot height. That's a good picture. There it is. Oh, yeah, that's, that's a picture of the neighbor's fence that is seven-foot tall. I believe they got a variance as well.
They did. Good morning. For the record, Philip Scharf with Community and Economic Development. The request is a one-foot variance to, to extend the, the, the existing brick wall, a foot over the maximum height limit, which is, which is six feet in residential district. The subject parcel is zoned RA1, single family. So I was just showing you some pictures here. This is the existing brick wall. That's there now. It's about five feet, about five feet tall right now. And it's, you can see that it is heavily vegetated, the, this fence here, the applicant, the, the neighbor did get a variance for, for the seven-foot fence bisecting the two properties. Those are along Brandon, which are... So that fence would be right here, excuse me, right here.
No, you had it right, the other one.
That's, that's location right there.
Lot four was the one, the south, that was the one with the fence there.
Yeah, right there. Exactly. Yeah, sorry about that. And so the fence is going to extend for 140 feet along the eastern property line and then 60 feet along the southern property line here. So that's where the fence goes. We, we only received one call or email and it really wasn't an opposition. They just, they were just saying as long as it didn't obstruct their view of the lake, which is, I think, believe this property owner here. And you can, like I said, where the fence stops, they have adequate, you know, views of the lake from where that is located. The particular hardship suffered by the appkins related to the lay of the land and lack of uniform buffer along the east boundary, which had brought the rear property line of the three single-family homes located on the west side of Brandon Road. The additional height will provide for additional privacy for the neighborhood lot to the south and create a uniform buffer along those property lines will be a benefit to the three single-family homes located on Brandon Drive as well. The result, hardship is not the result of any action taken by the applicant and there is, and the relief is reasonable and proportionate to the hardship being, to the degree of hardship. So in this case, staff is recommending approval of the variance. And stand for any questions.
Can you explain, or tell us a little bit more about what is the motivation behind raising the fence?
Sure. Privacy for all the neighbors. In fact, I've spoken to the two, one to the north and one to the east, and they're excited about it. I think because, well, we have a lot of vegetation and one of them was concerned that some of the vegetation would be removed and I assured them that we're going to cut it back a little bit to build the wall, but then it'll grow back.
Mr. Culbert, when you bought that lot to build the home, was that wall already there?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. So you have determined that you retain ownership of that wall? It's not something that is shared with any of the neighbors to the south or the east?
Excellent question. The, the wall was built exactly on the property line.
Okay. So it's on your side of the property? You've confirmed it's not any part of the neighbors or?
I'm sorry, what was questioned?
It's on your property. It's your, under your ownership.
Uh, well, it's on the property line.
Okay.
So I don't know who owns it if it's on the, so technically the wall is about a foot thick. Technically, half the wall's theirs and half of it's mine.
Yeah, just, I remember the neighbor on lot four, when he was building his house, I think Oliver Construction was the contractor. I went out there and I remember the wall was there at that time and that was before you built yours. So I was under the impression that maybe the developer of Lance Paul had built it some point. I just, I just wanted to make sure there are no issues as far as the ownership there and what's being done, so.
I, I don't believe there is, but I did talk to both of the neighbors that it affects and they're pretty excited about it.
Okay. Anecdotally, when I was out there taking pictures, I was fairly close to the fence and one of the neighbors came out to, to bring her dog out and she's like, hi. I was like, huh? You know, I was like, hello, hurry. So it is, it will provide more privacy, even though it is vegetated along there, you, you can definitely see your neighbors when they're, when they're out on the patio or whatever.
I can see their TVs.
Yeah.
To Mr. Lyons' point, the, the red L outline of the fence, is that all consistent of the one photograph we saw, the existing construction, the, the red brick?
Yes.
With the stone? That entire L, is that?
Correct.
Is that fence?
Yes.
It seemed to lend some credence that was built for that home, but obviously room for interpretation.
I mean, that would be a private civil matter if, you know, if, if something were to arise there. I just wanted to raise the issue, so. I would probably ask if there's anyone in the public that want to speak or?
Sure. Is there anyone in the audience? And you said that you had one comment that you received by email?
Yes, ma'am. Again, it was this, this neighbor, I believe, and they, they said as long as it's not obstructing their view of the lake, they, they didn't have any objections. And they, again, it wasn't, it wasn't a, an email and objection, it was just, you know.
Question.
Question, yes.
And just to clarify, your, your property is part of Lance Paul? It was part of that recorded subdivision?
That's correct.
It's not one? Okay. So there's the same subdivision? And there's no HOA or anything else that would?
No.
Maintain that? Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the request.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Ms. Mayweather.
Excuse me. Yes, approved.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Raschke.
Yes.
Mr. Culberson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
And Ms. Conishi, yes. It's approved.
Thank you, neighbors. Appreciate it.
Next request is for 203 Hybriton Way. The request is for a one-foot, one, 1.1-foot variance to allow a rear yard setback, setback of 3.9 and a three-foot variance to allow the interior yard setback of two feet in lieu of the five-foot minimum rear and interior side, side yard setback for accessory structures specified by table 4.3-4 of the land development code in order to replace an existing shed on the property located at 203 Hybriton Way. Who is here to speak on behalf of this request? Can you state your name and address, please?
Thomas Marusi, 203 Hybriton Way.
Thank you. Can you tell us a little bit about your request?
We are, need to replace an existing shed that's on that site that's in disrepair. We want to replace it with something more substantial and secure to store property other than just garden and lawn tools that are currently in there.
Good morning. For the record, Todd Vargo with Community and Economic Development. The lot is located at 203 Hybriton Way, which is part of the Villa Hollingsworth subdivision. According to the property appraiser, the house was built in 1996 and it's got a relatively small backyard. As we stated in the introduction, the, the current setback for accessory structures such as shed, sheds are five feet on the side and the rear. Here's the shed and you can see that it is, it is probably seen some better days, you know? So it's probably time to replace it. The hardship relates to the size of the rear yard and these improvements to the hardscape and landscaping that were made. Again, you can see the concrete and stone pathways that were laid. There's a gazebo over here. Here's another look from, into the backyard from the side of the shed. The shed's there on the left. And again, you can see the, the improvements made to the, to the backyard. The shed has been in place since 1996, according to the property appraiser. At that time, at that time, they would have had to have a setback of 10 feet for the shed, but we don't have any records of a variance that was granted, but it's, 96 was 26 years ago. So, yeah, it's probably, probably lost if there was any. In 2014, we changed the code to what it is today, what I stated before, a five-foot side and rear setback for accessory structures such as sheds. The issue with, part of the request is that, and I don't have a picture of it, but there is, there is a wastewater line that runs along the rear property line, which serves everybody on this street. And there is no easement. That tells you how, how old this wastewater line is, that the utility, utilities didn't get an easement or record an easement for this, for this utility line. So the, so we contacted the City of Lakeland Utilities and asked if they would be okay with the requested variance that Mr. Marusi is asking to put the shed closer than five feet to the property line. And they said they, they would really like to keep the full five feet in case they ever had to get into this and do any maintenance on this utility line, the wastewater line. They didn't want to have to tear up a shed or anything like that. I mean, if they do ever have to, you know, they'll probably have to tear up the fence that's back here along with the landscaping and things, but that's a little different than having to tear up somebody's shed. So the utilities has asked that we do not grant the setback from the rear property line, but they were fine, of course, with the setback from the side property line. So again, this is, this is the rear of the property over here. This is the side. So the next picture or two is going to be taken from underneath this pergola and you'll see the current side setback, which according to the survey is about one, 1.4 to 1.6 feet. So the new shed will actually be two feet from the property line. It'll be a little bit further. So here's the shed in the back corner and it's 1.6 to 1.4 feet. The new shed will be two feet off the side property line. And let me go back to the aerial. So here's the shed sitting in the corner of the lot and you can see that his next-door neighbor doesn't have anything in that area that this shed would be impacting. We didn't receive any comments from any of the neighbors and we believe that the amount of relief requested is the minimal amount necessary to allow for replacement of the existing shed and that that minimal amount is reasonable in respect to the hardship. However, again, due to the presence of the eight-inch wastewater line, we are recommending that only the request for the three-foot variance to allow a two-foot side yard setback be considered for approval as long as, again, this property owner to the east has no objections, which again, we haven't heard any. And I'll stand for it.
Just to clarify, so we're just asking for the second portion of the request because the, the first part relates to the rear yard setback, correct?
Correct.
Is there anyone in the audience who speak for or against?
Yeah, I would ask if you make a motion that you clarify that's only for the side yard setback. We did advertise for both. I think before we received a, a firm response from our utilities, we had already sent out the property notification letters there, so that's the reason we included that. But the appkin is aware that we would not be supporting a variance for the rear yard because of that.
So as stated in the documents we have, this, this is not the most current request?
It, it is what was submitted and it's what we advertised because we didn't, as Matt said, we didn't get a response back from utilities in time to change the description. But what we're, but what we're recommending approval for is the second half of the request.
The three-foot variance to allow a side yard setback of two feet in lieu of the five-foot minimum setback. So that second portion is what staff is recommending and?
Has the homeowner been advised what to do about the rear yard setback request, portion of the request?
We've spoken, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, to get it, goes back to when that subdivision was recorded, that K-PAD was likely done in the 1930s, so it's quite old there. It's not uncommon. And they're generally pretty durable, but it doesn't take much to damage them. I know in the past, we had a property nearby, a Bivon Lake Hollingsworth and Palm Mall that area, new construction. It's quite large. You might be familiar with it when they were building that. They, they requested some variance and they were denied, but they still managed to break the sewer line during construction when they were excavating the footers. And I think the neighbors weren't happy for a couple of days because they couldn't flush their toilets. So generally, water likes to keep those areas clear for maintenance, but also to produce any potential, you know, accidents, stuff like that.
So I will make a motion to allow a side yard setback of two feet in lieu of the five-foot minimum setback, again, for the side yard.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Ms. Mayweather.
Yes, approved.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Raschke.
Yes.
Mr. Culberson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
And Ms. Conishi, yes. It's been approved for the side yard setback.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have a request for a five-foot variance to allow a 10-foot rear yard setback in lieu of a 15-foot minimum rear yard setback specified by PUD zoning for Sandpiper Golf and Country Club, ordinance 3563 as amended, and a 3.7% variance to allow a maximum lot coverage of 38.7% in lieu of the 35% maximum specified by table 3.4-5 of the land development code to allow for the construction of a new screen room with a hard roof on the property located at 5760 Crane Drive. Who is here for this application? Hello? Can you state your name and address, please?
Good morning. I'm Matthew Taylor, 5760 Crane Drive, and in the interest of full disclosure, I am also the POA president for Sandpiper Golf and Country Club.
Can you tell us a little bit about your?
So we purchased the house about a year and a half ago and it has an existing screen room, so it's a little bit of a confusing description because it says that it's a new screen room, but it is existing. We have had ongoing water problems due to the restructuring of the golf course in that home. The first two weeks that we lived there, we basically had a wall of water come down that hill and flood our lanai, which is actually a heated and cooled room and is part of the square footage of the home. You can see there, there is a French drain. There were two French drains put in. Then you can also see that there is a berm in front of that palm tree. We had that berm built to make sure that the water came down between the homes instead of coming down against the home. And then you can also see there's a little bit of a rock gutter that is up against the back of the house and that is to direct water away because water came in underneath the wall during the flooding. It flooded a couple of times. We are still getting flooding at the entrance door into the lanai because it, the pavers are the same height as the lanai door. And so the solution that we feel the, the last thing that we need to do to make that room watertight is to put a hard roof on it. You can see the neighbor's home in the background there. It is, it has half screen roof and half solid roof. And so effectively, that is what we would be looking at. Our roof would not be attached to our, to our existing roof. It would be attached to the wall structure of the home and our contractor is Baker Aluminum Good, oh, sorry, God. Sorry.
I was just going to say, if you're the, you're the president of the POA?
Correct.
Has this been brought to the board, to your board?
Yes, and the architectural committee has approved it. And there's the, the permit that we got from them. I want to make sure that I dot all the i's and cross all the t's because Sandpiper can be a little bit stern.
Good morning. For the record, again, Todd Vargo with Community and Economic Development. I don't really have a lot much to add. Mr. Taylor did a great job of describing the, the problem and the issue. You can see from, from this, again, you can see the French drain. You can see the other mitigation techniques they tried to keep the, I guess it's kind of a deco drain, kind of the?
What, what it is, is that was a plastic, you know, the typical corrugated plastic that they used back in the day. And what we had done by all-around construction is they recovered it with plywood and hardy plank and they did a membrane that went down to the ground and actually formed a little bit of a gutter so that water wouldn't be able to permeate underneath the, the structure.
Anyway, with all the, with all the mitigation, you know, things they've tried, you can tell there is, there is definitely a problem here. This is looking up from their backyard up to the hole, the golf hole that's up there and you can still kind of see the, the berm that they put in as well. And you can see the, the elevation change. Now this next picture, I'm up on the hill looking down and again, you can see just, you know, how much water's going to flow into their backyards when it rains based on this
So the construction of the roof would have a gutter at the end and the gutter would then redirect the, it's a little hard to tell the slope, but there is a bit of a swale that runs by those shrubs on the left-hand side of the screen room and the gutter would redirect the water down that swale and down to the, across the street to the retention pond that we call Lake Swallow.
And again, the reason they're here is because once you put a hard roof onto a screen room, it's considered an extension of the principal structure and has to meet those principal structure setbacks. I think we've seen a lot of these, especially in Sandpiper, usually for people wanting to enjoy their outside patio more and they don't want to sit in the sun. This one's a little more of a, of an immediate need, especially with the rains coming. You know, so that's, that's the reason they're here for the variance, is the putting the, the hard roof on, on this existing screen room.
Now, in, in order to meet specifications, we would beef up the screen room. The corners will have to be taken down and strengthened and the, the slab, according to the contractor, is adequate for that structure.
And here's, there's, as, as Mr. Taylor said, here's their neighbor's property that already has kind of a covered hard roof screen room on it. And here's the permit from their architectural change request or architecture review board, I guess.
Correct. Correct.
And then here is their survey, which, again, shows the screen room here in the back. So the only change they'll be doing is putting the hard roof on, which is, again, something that we've kind of done a lot of here for Sandpiper residents, especially when they back onto a golf, the golf course or a retention area or a common area. It's usually not seen as much of a problem, as long as they don't back onto another house. So we believe the amount of relief requested is reasonable to accommodate the proposed hard roof screen room. Again, it's important to note that the only reason a variance is necessary is due to the replacement of the screen roof with a hard roof. Due to a lack of viable alternatives and all the things they already tried, and the minimal impact on adjacent properties, we recommend the request be considered for approval.
Motion to approve? We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Ms. Mayweather?
Approved.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Raschke?
Yes.
Mr. Culberson?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
And Ms. Cornishy, yes.
Thank you, appreciate it. Have a great day.
Next, we have 219 Unis Road. This is a request for a six-foot, six-inch variance to allow a rear yard setback of 13 feet, six inches, in lieu of the 20-foot minimum rear yard setback specified by table 3.4-1 of the Land Development Code to allow for the construction of a new 19-foot by 22-feet, six-inch hard roof screen room at the property located at 219 Unis Road. Hello, can you state your name and address?
Good morning. My name is Dennis Giordano, 219 Unis Road, Lakeland. And we'd like to add a screened room. Right now, the, the house was built in 1940. It just has a, a small deck, about 10 feet, and it's, it's just exposed to, it's about 12 feet, actually. It's exposed to the sun all day. You know, you can't sit out there really and enjoy it and eat. It's too hot, and if you do it in the evening, it's too buggy. And we just wanted to make a, a space that we could enjoy the, the yard, sit in the screen area, make it more of a living space with a hard roof. It's going to be connected to the wall, not the existing roof. And put a couple ceiling fans in there. It's just going to be a nice living space, and that's what it is, basically. There's no hardship there. It's just, we have a, a kind of an odd-shaped lot where the point that we're measuring from is, it's, yeah, it's right there. It, that's where we measure from. It's, it's, we're going 13 and a half feet, okay? And then the, the yard goes back 100 feet, like, just to the side of that. So there's a lot of space back there. It's just kind of a, a strange layout the way it is. So we're hoping to just have a screened-in living area there. We're going to put a concrete slab and do everything, make it very sturdy. My contractor's going above and beyond.
Good morning. For the record, Philip Scars, Principal Planner with Community and Economic Development. As Mr. Giordano was stating, this is a, a house built in 1940. It was in the, it consists of lots in 19 and 21 of the Casa Bella subdivision. And it's, as you can see by these, by the survey here, the, the property has an irregular L-shaped geometry resulting from the two lots that were combined. Lots 19 is wedge-shaped with 85, approximately 85 feet frontage along Unis Road, but only 65 feet wide in the rear. Lot 21 is irregularly shaped with 50 feet of frontage along Beacon, which is back, you know, Beacon Road is, is back here, but no access to Unis Road. The screen room, again, comes out right here. This, the zoning is RA1, which requires a 20-foot rear yard setback. But as you can show, go back in the, in the photos here, this is, again, looking directly at, at the rear of, of the dwelling. In the backyard, this, the point right here, this is where that, that fence line, and they have a good vibrdham hedge, that's where it kind of juts out, and, and kind of affects their, their rear yard setback. This is that, the remaining portion of their backyard. It's like, back behind that fence would, would be Beacon. And this is the fence line along, this is about where that point is, right here, where that fence goes back here. And I'm standing basically at the, not the center of the porch, but just at the back of the house, staring right at the, at that fence line. And again, like, there's, there's a, a six-foot fence behind this, and they have a very nice vibrdham hedge. We were talking about that when I was out there taking pictures. It, so it's, it does provide a substantial buffer. And again, the, the blue area shaded, that's where the, the limits of the proposed screen room. And again, it'd be 13.6 inches from that, from that corner. The particular hardship suffered by the applicant is related to the atypical parcel geometry, which consists of two lots of record that are adjacent but platted with irregular geometry and, and entirely separate frontages. Due to the location of the existing home, there are no viable alternatives for the placement of the screen room, because as you can see, there's just, there's no way to put it here or here. It's just that, that, that little corner right there just, just sticks out, and there's nothing you can really do. There's no design alternatives. The proposed screen room is appropriate in terms of both size and scale with respect to the existing single-family home. The hardship suffered is not the result of any action taken by the applicant. Their request is, the requested relief is reasonable in proportion to the degree of hardship resulting from the irregularly lot geometry. So therefore, staff is recommending approval of the, of the variance today. Stand for any questions?
Did you receive any comments from the neighbor to the south of the property?
I have not.
Okay.
Didn't receive any calls or emails in opposition.
Okay. And there's no one in the audience, I assume?
The, the obvious answer to not become before this board would have been to have built a, a structure 13 by 22 instead of 19 by 22. Is there...
Well, right now, we'll be adding about six feet. It goes out around 12 feet or so with the steps. So we're going to, it's just not enough room. If we just enclose that area, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be much of anything. So we wanted to get a few more feet, basically six more feet, six and a half feet, and so we could make it a living area that we can enjoy.
Can you go back to the, where we could see the deck extending from the home? Existing deck? So that, to the, well, it doesn't matter, to the, to the upper deck or to the lower stair, what is the measurement of that deck?
Was that 12, 12 feet, I believe?
With the steps.
With the steps, it's 12.
With the steps, it's 12. So another...
10 feet, maybe?
It might be taller than a few inches. I'm not exactly sure, but...
It's another seven feet, I believe.
So another seven feet. Big deck.
Yeah, if we look at this one, what was unusual was the way the parcel was created. There's two lots. One was planted on Unis and one on Beacon, so they were sort of coupled together, and it really does create an unusual situation, particularly in regards to the way the house was built and laid out there. So they obviously have a very large backyard, but the bulk of it is on Lot 21, which is on Beacon Road there. So the, the portion for the rest is much smaller and they're more constrained there. So we, we believe to be justified based on that particular hardship with the, the form of the property.
And it would be a very unusual deck indeed if we tried to comply it to the beacon portion. That would not be...
Yes.
Very old.
An enjoyable deck. I would make a motion to approve their request.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Ms. Mayweather?
Yes, approved.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Raschke?
Yes.
Mr. Culberson?
Yes.
And Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
And Ms. Cornishy, yes. It's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any unfinished business?
I do believe, we're going to understand that Ms. Schaefer will be ending her term early next month, so we will be looking to fill her seat. But we do thank you for your service here, and enjoy your vacation plans. I hope you have a very nice time. But thank you again.
We enjoyed having you on the board. Thank you.
And just, and I believe next month we're meeting on Wednesday because of the holiday, because it falls on the, the commission meeting will be here on the 5th, which is a Tuesday, which is when we normally meet.
Correct.
So the, the chambers will be occupied, so we'll be meeting on a Wednesday instead.
It would be the 6th.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Okay, Wednesday, the 6th. All right. If there's nothing else, then we're adjourned. Thank you.